We had a lot in the old sailboat area developed a house. The story that I want to tell you today, though, is not about who lives here, but it's where you go after. So many of my friends, so many of the people that I have met and lived with in the condos that we've been in have had family die, and they've had to leave the area because there is nothing here in the Isles. We want to stay in the Isles. If you have not been to Brookdale, if you have not been to the Palms, do you know that the Palms doesn't even have bathrooms for the memory care people? You have to go out in a hall. So if you're a visitor there, you don't even have the opportunity to have privacy of bathroom privileges. The reason they're not full is none of the homes are ever completely full. But an efficiency that is the size of the average kitchen is not where I plan to go. I am so proud of my son for wanting to keep me and my friends in the Isles with the type of living facilities that we've had. You can take your own furniture. You can make it your own home. One of my friends, Betty Coons, she's 94, she just gave up driving. She fell, the fire department had to come and break into her house because no one had a key. She wants to stay there because she goes to the Isles Yacht Club three times a week. She wants to stay here. She says, "Don't send me across the river to Brook, to, well, it's now Brookdale, but Southport." And then there's others. I have a friend, she just put her husband in a facility across the river while he is rehabbing from a stroke. The people where we actually live right now, the Kimerlings. Don had Lewy Body Dementia. He had to go in a facility. She lost gay, lost all of her friends because every day she was going across the river to visit. She ended up in a facility in California with her daughter. She wanted her furniture, though. She wanted her surroundings with her. And what happened was, they moved her in the facility, and the next day she died. She got to be in a facility one day, but not in Punta Gorda, not with her friends. And if you move us outside of the area, you die quicker because you lose your friends, you lose those associations, and that's not what I want.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bill Batromateo. I live on El Cerrito Court. My wife's Deborah. I'm also on the Charlaconey Board of Zoning Appeals for this district. And certainly, I'm not here in that capacity, so I'm not pretending to be. But I've looked at the report, I've looked at a lot of documents, and if I was sitting where you're sitting, I would have been sending this report back to staff. I would have been asking some questions that aren't being asked. You know, we're basing this, we have to resort to the dictionary to define certain terms, and I find that troubling. The code should be not ambiguous or vague, especially for a project this magnitude. But I would have wanted to know, since we're taking great pains to make sure we're not defining these as dwelling units because they have no kitchen, has anyone asked the question, "Are they going to have a microwave?" Because if so, by the very same dictionary that we're using to defend it, it also defines that a kitchen is a place to prepare food with heat, and microwaves certainly prepare foods with heat. And if that's the case, that should be restricted and one of the exceptions. I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to, I'm going to put on my other hat. I come here from Providence to eliminate what plagues the North, moved here last fall after living in Port Charlotte for 10 years, because I came here to seeking a better quality. I have 30 years in law enforcement, the last six is police chief, a lot of credentials. I don't have 30 minutes to explain them all. But I've been involved in disaster planning, I've run emergency operations centers, I've been in charge when there's been hurricanes, blizzards, and other natural disasters. And I find it disconcerting that a report to you doesn't mention any of those issues. Yes, by code, there are a four criteria, in addition to other considerations that you shall consider. No one's talking about quality of life. What are you going to do when there's a walk-off at 2:00 in the morning, how it's going to drain our resources? Now, I know it was stated at a previous hearing that there'll be security. Prisoners have securities, too, and people escape. I've been involved in these searches. When helicopters are up there at 2:00 in the morning, dogs walking through neighborhoods and such, these need to be considered. And again, why staff hasn't put it as part of their report, I can't answer that. The other major concern, I was pleased to see Jerry Waxler mention they're going to have an evacuation plan. But what I find troubling is, this is being considered on a major evacuation route. How do we plan on getting those vehicles in? Remember, these are ambulatory people. And how do we plan on getting the thousands of people out when there are vehicles trying to come in to our Kia Star? It should not be allowed on an evacuation route. If I was your police chief, I'd be telling you to take a serious look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Leach, and I live on Raven Court, and I have been duly sworn. Seven years ago, my husband and I moved to Punta Gorda. We moved from a residential community similar to PGI because we sensed a feeling of community as well as the residents who shared the same interest. Perhaps one of the most important reasons for choosing Punta Gorda Isles as our home is it offered neighborhood residential homes, single-family and multifamily with little or no commercial entities. I believe many people who purchased residences and vacant land did so for the same reasons. The city's comprehensive plan was designed to enable prospective homeowners the knowledge of surrounding land use. I believe many prospective buyers rely on this plan as a vision for the growth of the city. The term "commercial property," also called "commercial real estate," investment or income property, refers to buildings or land intended to generate a profit, either from capital gain or rental of buildings. Key words, "generate a profit." I believe the owners of the proposed assisted living facility and memory care unit intend to provide a facility to generate a profit. Therefore, it is my opinion that regardless of what the present proposal for a special exception is to the present zoning of multifamily, it actually is a commercial endeavor. Call it what you may, it is commercial in nature. I ask myself, why else would a developer intrude on a residential community but to see a way to generate a profit? I believe that many people in PGI agree that an assisted living facility would be acceptable in Punta Gorda in a properly zoned area with no special exceptions. I'm against granting the special exception. It does not belong in a zoned residential community. At this point in time, I am very concerned that if this facility is approved, it will be setting a dangerous precedent for future land use development. We do not want to see the city chip away and intrude into various zoning areas with special exceptions that could disrupt our beautiful neighborhoods. At this time, I'd also like to point out of the rendition of the proposed facility that has three stories. This is definitely not harmonious with the surrounding residential homes and existing commercial property. I want to thank the mayor and the council for the dedicated work you do for our city. It is my hope that you will carefully consider all aspects of this proposal and its impact on the residents and residential neighborhoods of PGI. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mary Ann Adesani, 1430 Raven Court. I have not been sworn.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I certainly do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I live on Raven Court, and I am here to voice my opposition against the special consideration for changing the zoning for this particular parcel of land. If you take a ride through PGI, as I've been doing, in Punta Gorda itself, the city, I'm so stunned by how many empty parcels of land we have with these huge signs, "For Sale," "Commercial," "Retail." Look on any corner, particularly down near Bayfront Punta Gorda, right next to the hospital. What a terrific spot for this type of an environment. Near doctors, near a hospital, near wellness centers, near physical therapists, near social workers, all right there within walking distance of their facility. And it astounds me to believe that this would go in the middle of a neighborhood again. I'm, I know that things have to change, but the dying dinosaur is the neighborhood. Do you not see that? Without the neighborhood, what are people going to come to Punta Gorda for? They come for the quiet. They come for the fact that we're not Naples, that we're not Sarasota, that we're not Venice, that we're not Englewood. They come because they like the quiet neighborhood. Turn a Kia Star into a multi-lane highway, and I ask you to go across the bridge and go up to King's Highway and take a left onto Midway and see what a decimation a four-lane highway in the middle of a residential neighborhood does. Those people are absolutely beside themselves. They have an interstate, and they can't back in, out of their driveway or easily access their driveways without backing into a two-lane, one, going one way, or backing into it on the other side, going the other direction. There's places for all things. There's places for shopping centers. There's places, we have empty buildings. You drive along 41, and it's one vacant building after another. Pick up any realty, if you're an investor, and my husband and I are investors, and there's a "For Sale" sign on just about everything in Punta Gorda. You look, you see stores that you thought, "That couldn't possibly be for sale." It's for sale. Name the price.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Walt Peterson. We live at 3835 Saba Court on PGI. We've been here for 12 years. I've had the pleasure or the displeasure of sitting where you do and various towns on planning boards and councils. This whole episode that we're going through here boils down to two things. You have a choice to make today, or tomorrow, whenever you make it. You can either have a developed piece of property over there, which we know what the entity is going to be per proposal that we have in front of us, or it's probably going to end up to be a rental, which we all know what that is. That's what it boils down to. The best thing, in my opinion, for the proposal to go forward right now and be accepted because there's a change coming on that property, and it's going to happen. Let's pick the best option we have because we know what it is. These people are professionals, they have a track record, and anybody that thinks this facility is going to go broke just doesn't know the demographics of where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Please line up if you are willing, wanting to speak. Now would be the time. We need you to line up so we can be as efficient as possible. Thank you.
My name is Bill Leach. I reside at 1436 Raven Court. I am over a mile away from this proposed project. My prepared statement would just be redundant, so I just want to make some brief remarks. Number one, it'd be nice to show up at a meeting without a red shirt. Secondly, I've mentioned this before at the zoning hearing. Look at our city seal. It communicates a message, what this community is about, tranquil and still and quiet. If something were to happen to my wife or myself, which is most likely inevitable, the first place we're going to go is near our children. We would not stay here, as much as we love it here. The proposed facility, and think about this carefully, is over twice the size of this convention center in a residential zoned area. The three facilities that exist in Punta Gorda currently, and this has been mentioned before, are much smaller and not a capacity, and that is a fact. And lastly, and I regret having to make this my last comment, are we now being threatened with apartments? I, I hope not. And if apartments are on our property and it's within the current zoning, then let it be because we won't be saddled with a huge facility that's going to detrimentally impact this wonderful community. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Harvey Goldberg. I live in Punta Gorda Isles, and I have been sworn. I live in close proximity to this proposed facility. And for six years, I've had the privilege and honor of sitting where you did, where you are right now. And at that time, and as I do now, I truly respect the passion of the people in this room who come to speak their piece and express their, their opinion and their wants and desires. I also recognize that over that time, also, there are many, many more residents of this community, this 17,000 population community, that do not come and are, are not able to come to meetings like this and express their opinion. That I would consider be the silent majority. It's normal and, and in process that people who have a strong opposition to something do want to speak out against it. The people who are maybe in favor of it, which I believe there are many, choose not to. I think this is an excellent project. I live in this neighborhood. I want to reside in this neighborhood. I want to continue to be in this neighborhood. This is my home and where I plan to live. This is where I plan to move to the home after I'm not able to take care of myself or my wife's not able to take care of me. And I think it is an excellent part of the neighborhood to have a facility like this in it. I think the developers done an excellent job providing modifications that have been expressed by, by members of the community and will continue to do that. I think the city staff has done an excellent job making the evaluation of this and matching it and comparing it rather to the criteria for this special exception. There's also another aspect to this entire project that many people don't speak of, and that's the human compassion side. If you've ever had to move a family member or a close relative or someone into a facility, a care facility, even an assisted living facility, it is so disruptive to their lives, traumatic to their lives, and traumatic to your lives, too, if you're involved in having to make that decision. And having a facility like this in a community where you can visit and be around friends in a comfortable, familiar, and similar environment is invaluable. I know I would treasure it and value that myself. And for speaking for myself, yes, I would love to have this facility in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Please make your way. Anybody else would like to speak, line up now.
Morning. My name is Joan Purcell. I've been sworn in. I live at 3319 Dominica Court. I moved here in 95, and I rented for a year in the old section. We looked around, took our time, and one of the reasons I moved over to this area is because of the peace and tranquility that's there. That will be terribly disrupted if this facility goes in. It does not belong in the area. And everybody that's here is, and I'm sure this place would be packed if it was during season. Now, many times going out on a Kia Star during season, I counted 40 to 50 cars coming in. So you can't tell me that the traffic, it's just going to be crazy. It doesn't belong in the area. We moved here for the peace and tranquility that we get, and that's what I'm here for, and that's what I lived here for, and that's what I continue to live here for. And I think everybody will agree with that. It does not belong in this area. There's many other sections of Punta Gorda that it would, as you said, down by the hospital, perfect place for it, not here. Please do not vote for it. We're all against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please line up behind the lady who's coming to the podium.
My name is Julie Esdell. I own a vacant lot on 1215 Socorro Drive, just about across the street from this project. And we are very devastated by this. We think that it will really devalue the property value. And I don't think that the comparison that the gentleman did earlier was very accurate for this area. Both Bell Harbor and Shreve and those areas where Life Care Center was are all much busier roads. They're not in neighborhoods like a Kia Star and Socorro Drive are. I think that, one other thing is, I do agree that we need more assisted living facilities, but I do think that they should be on main roads and much closer to the hospitals. Right now, I'm caring for my 90-year-old dad who is at Sand Hill Gardens, and I have to take him to the hospital or the doctor's office three or four times a week, and I've got to drive 20 minutes to get him from Sand Hill down to Port Charlotte to the hospital area. And that is the most, you know, time-consuming and aggravating part of being so far away from the doctors and the hospitals that he needs to see most of the time. So I would love to see another facility in Punta Gorda, but closer to the hospitals and the doctors that are there to treat him. Thank you.
Hi. My name's John For, and I live on Cassandra Drive in the city of Punta Gorda. I just want to say I am for this facility. I, you know, I don't think there are enough facilities here. You know, when, when people go into these facilities, we just had to put my sister in one, sometimes they don't want to go. And we've had to put other family members in them. And, and most of the time, they don't want to go. But however, you know, when they can't remember where they are and you have to continually go get them, they need to be there. But, but if you can find an environment that they're comfortable with and they're familiar with, then, you know, they get there and you take their car keys from them and they become settled in. And they also have nurses there that routinely make sure that they get their medicine. My sister just happened to have her pancreas removed seven years ago, and after seven years of not having her pancreas, you know, other problems started happening. So I'm for this facility. Now, the next thing is, a lot of people, as previously said, that would be residing in this facility, they're not here today because they can't get here. Okay? But they're going to want to go, they're going to want to go to this facility. Now, as an emergency manager, previously, I know you're all concerned about the ambulances going back and forth. If I was an emergency manager, I would rather everybody in the neighborhood that has these conditions and need this help, that they be in one building, rather than during the big storm, we have to go around, you know, to 127 different spots to help them evacuate the community. Now, as far as living down at the hospital, and I knew that coming up, and I'm not making fun of what people said before, I've been down there. I've stayed in that hospital, and that's all I'm going to say. I also go down there, if, if the building's down there, across from the area that they're talking about is the Wellness Center and the Behavior Health Center. Okay? If you go the other direction, there's a large funeral home. If you are brave enough to cross the street, to walk along the river, I mean, those cars are coming from out of town. You know, I just don't think, I feel the family members are family members, and someday it's going to be me. You know, I would rather be there than being up and out tuna, you know, for my last couple of years. But thank you, and I hope you do, do the right thing for our citizens.
Thank you. This is the last call, last call, before we start the rebuttal.
My name is Ron Gadina, and I'm sworn-
You need to speak into the microphone, sir.
My name is Ron Gadina, and I'm sworn in. And just a comment about some of the things I've heard here today. I moved to Punta Gorda, what is it now, 17 years ago. I have traveled down here and looked for a place to live for 10, 15 years before that. Punta Gorda used to be listed as one of the 10 best areas in the country to retire. One of the reasons for that is the fantastic residential area, the community, and PGI. This facility does not belong in the middle of this residential area. You've encroached on it by other things over and over again. It's not what it was intended to be today, and you're making it worse and worse every time you do something like this. Okay? The other thing is, I've heard all these people say there's not enough facilities around here. Over the time I've been here, I've put parents in assisted living facilities in this area. Okay? I just put a mother-in-law in a facility here. We get more telephone calls once the facilities and the mom, the place for mom and other things find out that somebody's looking for a place. We get constant telephone calls. They're all looking and fighting for business. There is no lack of facility here. Okay? That story is not true. Please don't ruin this area any more than you've already ruined it with the other things that you've done. A building that large with that many people in it is going to be a disaster.
Thank you. Last call, final call.
Very quickly, before I begin, I'd like to formally introduce into the record as our applicant's Exhibit 1, our application, as Exhibit 2, our PowerPoint presentation, as our Exhibit 3, our letter from Cisco, Exhibit 4, the revised site plan, Exhibit 5, the proposed conditions of approval, and Exhibit 6, the planning report. I very quickly want to address some of the main comments that were raised and concerns that were raised. The first thing that I heard was about the 50-foot setback. That is imposed in your code on nursing homes, nursing homes only. It is not imposed on assisted living facilities. It is not imposed on adult congregate living facilities. There's a good reason for that. A nursing home is a more intense use than an assisted living facility. It provides a higher standard of care. Because it provides a higher standard of care, state statute requires a higher staffing ratio. You have more employees, you have greater parking, you have more deliveries because they are providing medical care, which an assisted living is not providing. So all those things create a more intense use, which would lend itself to the need for a greater setback. That has never been imposed on assisted living facilities in Punta Gorda. It's never been interpreted that way. It was not imposed on the expansion by special exception of the Palms. It was not discussed with us in our pre-app, and it is not met in the special exception application that will follow this one for an assisted living facility in Burnstour Isles. We will not be 50-foot in height because we are three stories at grade. We will be 42-foot in height only for a third of the property. You have a third that was at, will be at that height. The next third will be at two stories. The final third will be at one story. While a multifamily complex can go to three stories over parking, and you will likely have, while we have a 500-foot building, you will have 500 feet separated slightly of buildings all at 50-foot, three stories over parking. This is, we talked about, there was some about the preserve, the preserve and the values, the property values and taxes. The preserve is in bankruptcy and went into receivership because it could not sustain sales at that level. But even using the numbers presented by that resident, she had 30 sales, it totaled about $5.5 million. So let's say that if you had 65 units, which this could support, that would give you about 12, 13 million. This is a- This is a $20 million facility, so you're going to have higher taxes generated by this property than you would by multifamily. You heard our experts, who addressed many of the other comments that were raised. This will reduce traffic over what they could expect if it was developed as a multifamily site, which is what it is owned for. 41% at your peak hour from 4:00 to 6:00, and the overall daily traffic counts are lower with an assisted living than they will be with multifamily. You heard testimony that it will reduce property values, paired sales around Brookdale, as well as looking to replicate that data, all up and down Southwest Florida. This complies with your LDRs. This is a project that the mass of the building, while it's 500 feet long, has...articulates in and out as opposed to your multifamily buildings, which will essentially be all one building with only slight articulation. The visual impact will be less with this facility than it will be with multi-story, multifamily development. We have also proposed conditions to mitigate, which address many of the comments that were raised. We have enhanced buffers. We have community input on the exterior elevation, reduced lighting impacts, an evacuation plan in place, and limitations on where the deliveries can come and the types of vehicles that the...that they will be delivered in. Your comp plan, they focus on one comp plan policy. You have to look at it in the totality. 1.1.14.1 states that in residential lands, other uses that are consistent with residential character may be permitted. People live in an assisted living facility. It is consistent with residential character. It's one of the reasons why these type of facilities are typically found by special exception in residential areas. And Objective 4.1.1 requires Punta Gorda to provide for a variety of housing types to meet the special housing needs of its citizens, and assisted living does just that. It is appropriate and right to place an assisted living facility in a residential neighborhood in general and in Punta Gorda Isles in particular. Husbands or wives won't have to travel far to visit their spouse. Friends can continue to be part of the residents' lives. Most importantly, the residents can continue to remain connected to and be part of the community that they've grown to love, Punta Gorda and Punta Gorda Isles. In a retirement destination like Punta Gorda, this type of facility should be welcomed and encouraged as part of a community's desire to keep its residents local and connected through all phases of life. Agape Senior Living requests approval of its special exception for an assisted living facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I just hold up one second, please? I would like to disclose that we...that I did meet with the applicant and the attorney, and that is required by us to note that on record.
Same for me. It doesn't matter.
I wanted to do that before the hearing is closed because it is technically...
Well, yeah, technically, you can disclose that even in our discussion, but...
Okay. Well, I'm disclosing it now.
I think I have to. I have...
I have as well. I've also had conversation with residents.
Right.
As I have. Yeah. I mean, I've discussed this with lots of people. So this is not something that, you know, I've been, as I'm sure my colleagues are, we're open to dialogue with anyone, so...
Correct. Did we have a motion?
I did make a motion.
I second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay. I have about 10 minutes, so...
I don't know that we can do this conversation justice in 10 minutes.
Okay.
It's my personal opinion. I think we would be rushing it.
Okay.
I concur.
Agree.
So I think that we need to continue the...was that judicial public hearing?
It would be, just as we had to do recently, continue the deliberation process of this to a date certain.
Okay. So does July 5th work for...yes, I'm getting a head shake. Yes. So continuation to July 5th? Location?
Well, we don't know if the event center is available again. I mean, do you want to go back to council now? Because we've had the public hearing.
We can try it. Yeah. It'll be July 5th at the City Council chambers.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Okay. So we're...we have a motion?
Of course, the public is welcome.
Yes. It will be a regular city council meeting, and the council deliberations will take place at that time. So we have...we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
So move that we continue deliberations to July 5th.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second to continue the council deliberations to July 5th. The city council meeting starts at 9:00 a.m. It's an open public meeting, just like any regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. We will now take a 10-minute break.